We got, we got a huge forum now. All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session for October 23rd. We've got three items on the agenda this morning, including the MPO and local option sales and service tax and that annual report. And then we're going to talk about the budget. Mr. Manager, any quick comments?
No, I think we can jump right up and invite Dylan up. I think most of you know Dylan, but for those that don't, Dylan is our interim director over at the MPO and has many years of experience in, at the MPO as they guide us through transportation issues within the whole region. So we asked him to come in and give an update and allow you guys to ask any questions. So Dylan, I'll hand it over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. It's good to see all of you. I know this is going to be a little bit of a different update than we do to city councils since all of you mostly serve on the MPO and Councilwoman Westergaard has served in the past. So you all are familiar with, with the MPO. But first of all, I just want to say thanks for letting us come out here today. It's been a while since we've been out meeting with the city councils, just because of COVID and some staffing issues, but we're trying to get back at it. So hopefully this isn't the last time we see you, you know, for, for a couple of years. We want to be out here as much as you want us to. You all pay dues to the MPO. So we want to make sure there's a good dialogue back and forth and that we're doing the things you want us to do and so forth. So I'm going to talk about just a little bit about what the MPO is. And again, most of you know some of this, but I don't think it hurts to have a refresher. And then we'll talk about a couple of upcoming projects that we want to make sure are on your radar. So the MPO, as you might know, is a federally required organization. They're required in urban areas over 50,000 to look at transportation issues. They were started back in the 1960s when the interstate system was being built. And if you think about it, it kind of makes sense that the US government didn't want to tell the cities what to do. They said, when we get to urban areas, let's have them all get together and figure it out for themselves of how that system should go through there, how it's going to impact everything. And from there it evolved. So with every transportation bill that comes out at the federal level, the rules and requirements of MPOs get tweaked ever so slightly. The funding changes a little bit here and there. But aside from that, it's pretty locally driven. So it's made up of local communities, transit authorities, if we had a port, a port authority, if you will. And, and those locally get to determine who sits on the MPO, how many representatives, what the dues look like and everything. So it has that federal structure, but it has that local, locally derived. And really, the MPO is the policy board. So Gunner and I work for the MPO, but it's really you and your peers from throughout the communities that are the MPO. As a former director, Tom Kane, if you remember him, used to tell us, the MPO is really the table and chairs for the region. We set it out there. We let you come together. We try to keep you pointed in the right direction, but it's up to you to make those decisions. There's a couple core functions of what MPOs do. So again, provides that setting for decision making. We also do plans. We do studies and so forth, as you might expect. We prepare a long range plan. We have a transportation improvement program, which is similar to the city CIP. We have, we have to be performance based. So we can't just make decisions because we feel like it. They have to be justified by performance data, performance metrics. And then we have to involve the public. And I think it's also important to talk about what the MPOs don't do. Typically, MPOs don't build or own or operate anything. We leave that to you all and DART and the DOT. But instead, we are that forum. We provide that coordination aspect to things. We're one of nine MPOs in the state. We're the largest one that's fully within the state. The Omaha Council Bluffs one's a little bit bigger in terms of population size, but most of that's in Nebraska. And then, so looking more locally to our MPO, similar to MPOs across the country, we've been around in one form or another since the 1960s, but up until 1983, it was part of a different organization. It was, it was part of a regional council. Since 1983, so this is our 40th anniversary, we have been a standalone MPO. And that started out as a department within the city and then it broke away in about 1993 and became its own, became its own entity. We're a 2080 organization and we also have bylaws. Both of those were last updated in 2018. And that's the last time our strategic plan was updated too, five years ago. We have 20 communities. So that includes 16 cities and portions of three counties, Polk, Dawson, Warren County. If you see on that map, there's that heavy line surrounding the Des Moines Metro. That's our planning area boundary. So that's everything within there is our jurisdiction. And I will point out, because it's been asked in other updates, that line will be being adjusted here in the next couple of months. That's something we have to do after a census and be something we do before our long range transportation plan. So don't be surprised if that line looks a little bit different the next time we come out and speak to you. In terms of our operating structure, there's really three main committees. And one I'm not showing on here is our technical committee, but it's structured very similarly to the policy committee. Every community over 3,000 gets a voting represent, a voting seat at the MPO. And then for every communities over 50, they have increments of 50,000 above that get additional seats. So what that means is, Ankeny and Westmore have two seats, City Des Moines has five seats, everyone else just has one. So 26 voting members total. And the member communities select who sits on the MPO. So typically that's a city council member, elected official, but it can be a city manager, can be staff, it can be just a member of the public too. We've seen that in the past. And then below that is an executive committee. And right now, Councilman Gatto, Mayor of County, serve on the executive committee. That is a more policy oriented group that, that takes a harder look at things. And we try to make that geographically representative as well as big city, small city represented. So the communities over 50,000 have permanent seats on that committee. City Des Moines has two seats. And then the other communities under 50,000, they're broken into three different pods essentially, and those pods select who they want to serve on the, on the executive committee. This is part of our overall structure. Those three main committees are right there in the middle. But then we have a lot of different subcommittees, roundtables, working groups and so forth. And this is really representative of the fact that we as staff, nor our committees, or our elected officials, know everything there is to know about transportation. We're not all experts, except for maybe Carl, in bicycle pedestrian issues. We're not all experts in freight and smart cities and so forth. So we have these groups put together that can help us make those decisions and they feed into the process. So that's a little bit just then the basics around the MPO. Now I want to talk about a few things that are upcoming, a couple of projects of note, if you will. The first one is our long range transportation plan. MPOs are federally required to do a plan update at least once every five years. And this is one of the handful of core things that MPOs do, and it's pretty foundational to the work that the MPO does. Our last plan was updated in November of 2019. So next November is when our plan update is due. And this is a plan like any others identifies goals and objectives and so forth. But what's really important about this is any project that seeks federal funding from the US DOT has to be included or justified by this plan. So that could be funding that the MPO receives, that it allocates directly, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, or any discretionary funds that the city might go after, or earmarks that you go after through a congressman's office, have to be supported by that plan. So right now, we're doing some of the background data. We're getting things set to go a little more public. We'll have public involvement starting early next year. But really a call for action for you all and for your staff is to start thinking about the problem areas that you have, start thinking about the projects you want to see in that plan. So that when we get to that point, we make sure everybody's happy, everything's in there that needs to be in there. So that again, you qualify for the funding you want to see in the future. Another project that we're starting to work on is a Safe Streets and Roads for All project. And this is a new federal program through the, through the US DOT. It was created in the infrastructure bill passed a couple of years ago. And it's really focused on safety of the transportation system. Now, what's interesting about this is it's kind of a two-part or two-phased process. The first part is for planning. And, and they put planning dollars out there to create what's called a safety action plan, or a comprehensive safety action plan, to identify all the safety issues, to identify solutions, and you know, to map out that path going forward. And once you have a qualifying safety action plan, then you can qualify for implementation dollars. And there's pretty significant dollars out there, anywhere from a minimum of $5 million to up to $30 million, or if it's a multi-jurisdictional project, $50 million. So what the MPO has done is it's applied for that phase one planning. Now, what's interesting is the City of Des Moines, you already qualify through this. You've already done your vision zero planning. That qualifies you for that second phase already. So what the MPO has done is it's applied and received funding to do something similar for the rest of the metro. Now, I want to make sure that you all understand, we're not going to replace what you did. We're only going to complement what you've done. So we're going to take what you've done and just kind of expand it out to the rest of the communities. And we actually hired the same firm that did your plan to, to do ours as well, to do the rest of the MPOs as well. But at the end of that, then every community within the MPO, because the city already has theirs, and we'll do something similar for everybody else, will then qualify for those implementation dollars here in the next couple of years, once our plan is done. You guys already qualify. You can apply now for those implementation dollars. The rest of the communities will have to wait until this other plan is done. Are there any questions about that? I know that's a little different for you guys versus the other communities that we're talking to. So for, for the other communities, we would tell them, start working on your project list, start getting your, your, you know, things identified. You've already done that. But we do want to thank you guys. And I would put out there too, that as you work forward in your implementation, please let us know if there's anything we can be doing as far as letters of support, data analysis, whatever you might need from us. We're happy to support that.
Just a quick question. So could City of Des Moines apply for funds through our program and the Des Moines MPO area wide program?
I mean, technically, yes. Once we get ours done, it would, it's basically going to take your plan and kind of incorporate it into ours. So it will be covered in both, but you wouldn't need to wait until the MPOs is done. And it wouldn't really get you anything extra. It would, you already have it.
So we couldn't apply for the additionally to our, our own plan. We couldn't apply for the second, or for the area wide?
Yeah. Our, our plan is to put in an application for Des Moines projects and then support the metro when they're ready.
Support, okay.
But I think to Carl's question, can't double dip, right? Is that, I mean, that's kind of what you're asking.
Well, I was trying to avoid that term, Joe.
Okay. Well, I'll spell it out to you.
Wouldn't it be the timing that if we've already got our application and we could be awarded before you even get your plan done?
Correct. Right. Exactly.
So we're, yeah. And then we can see what else we need.
You are correct, Joe. That's what I was.
Wanted to make sure.
The timing, so when is the exact timing you can apply on these?
The timing, so the, the last round of funding that came out for implementation dollars came out in the spring. So I'd anticipate sometime March, April is when that next notice of funding opportunity would come out. So the MPO's plan won't be done by then. It'll probably be the next spring, but before the MPO will qualify for theirs. And then I finally just wanted to wrap up talking about MPO funding. As most of you know, the MPO has a couple of different funding streams that it awards directly. The first one of those is the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. This is a program, again, like all these others, created through the infrastructure bill, or the, whatever transportation reauthorization bill is there at the time. It's a formula program based on population. So right now, with what's happening at the federal level, as that trickles down to us, it's about $16 million that the MPO receives every year to allocate to, to transportation projects. There's a table there on the right that shows you a different, couple of different percentages. This comes from our long range transportation plan and identifies the different kind of mile markers we want to hit in terms of how those funds are allocated. So again, a minimum of 10% goes to transit, a maximum of 30% goes to roadway capacity, and a, and a lot of different, a couple of different other markers within there. That's up to the policy board when we do the long range plan, if that, those numbers need to change at all. And I would note too, that there's a few of these programs that are more popular than others. So surface system optimization, for example, that's looking at signals and roundabouts and anything that can help make traffic move a little bit smoother without adding a lot of capacity to the roadways. Doesn't get a lot of applications. So that's something to think about as you, you know, strategize what you want to be applying for in the future here. A couple of other funding programs with a lot less money, but still important. One is the Transportation Alternatives Program. This gets about $1.5 million annually and it's for more bicycle pedestrian facilities, trails, safe routes to schools, streetscape programs and so forth. And then a new program is called the Carbon Reduction Program. This is new through the federal infrastructure bill. And it, it, the MPO receives about $1.3 to $1.4 million annually too, to work on things that help reduce carbon emissions. And that, there's a whole host of things that can be out there. That can be electric vehicle charging. It can be just more efficient use of, you know, reducing idling and those sorts of things, travel demand management. We haven't awarded any of these dollars yet. This is a, even though this says the funding's from FY '23 to '27, or 24 to '27, it's a new program. So we have about $7 million sitting there that we can decide what to do with. And in talking to the executive committee and the policy committee last week, the thinking might be, let's wait until we get through the long range transportation plan next spring and then decide what we want to do with it. Cause we will have then gone through all the planning. But again, something to start thinking about is, what do we want to do as a region to? $7 million isn't huge, but it's $7 million more than we've had in the past for these types of things. So let's be strategic in what we want to do with this. For the program for the SDB, for the Surface Transportation Block Grant, we will release applications in December for those. Those are typically due back at the beginning of the calendar year. And then it works through a process where staff scores them. It goes to a funding subcommittee who, who reviews that. The funding subcommittee is made up of elected officials, a couple of city managers, that make a recommendation up to the MPO policy board and, and then is finally made final in May. And then it goes from there into our transportation improvement program for you all to spend the money that you might receive. Looking at grant funding throughout the last couple of years, as it's spread around the metro, here's a map showing it. And I'll flip quickly to a table that maybe makes this a little more clear. You can see for every community in Des Moines is highlighted there, how much federal funding through the MPO you've received over the last five years. And then compared that to the assessments that you've paid in. So the City of Des Moines received almost $31 million total and is paid in just a little under a million dollars. So it's about a 31%, or 31 to, 32 to one return on investment, which is pretty good for, if you look at the other communities. This is something we always try to keep in the back of our mind. And, and I know the funding subcommittee likes to look at too, just to make sure that everyone's, you're getting some sort of benefit for being in I'll leave that up there. I think that's my last slide though. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them. If you have any feedback for us, happy to take that too. But otherwise, thank you for letting us be here today.
All right. Anybody have anything?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Manager, should we move on?
Yeah. As Nick comes up, we have an opportunity to update you on our local option sales tax and how those funds are continuing to adhere to the referendum that was passed and the different categories that are represented. So Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Scott. Honorable Mayor and council members. Nick Shaw, Finance Director here at the city. Our local option report will be released today. And so this kind of covers some of the overarching expenses that we had during fiscal year 23. So as of June 30. As we go through these numbers, I will try and answer any questions you guys may have on the different areas. But some of that information will be actually in the report that we distribute. And if there's more detailed questions, we may have to go to the department that actually is facilitating those, those programs. The first piece that I want to talk about is the property tax relief. In fiscal year 23, we had three different components to that. The property tax relief, the 29 million went into the debt service fund. And then we also had a million dollar contribution to Neighborhood Finance Corp. And avoidance, we had 15 million of the existing balance go into that project as well. To kind of show how that is reflected in our property tax rate, this kind of expresses where our property tax rate was back in 2016. And it was on the rise all the way up into fiscal year 19, where it was 1724. As we got local option, to be able to do the bond issuances that we have done, we were able to go down to 1664 and then 1661. And then this graph shows how much of that rate has been suppressed with the transfer into the debt service fund. The current fiscal year we're in is $2.53 difference in comparison to where we would be if we did not have local option. As it relates to the other uses of funds, if you take out the dollars we spent for the property tax relief, this is the breakout of the other expenditures. The largest component of that is neighborhood improvements at 51%. And then the streets at 34 and the public safety improvements and expenditures at 15.
So I know we dropped it to 1664. We haven't changed our rate, but now it's 1671. So what other entity got a little bit more money?
That's our rate. And that's just our, what was estimated in the last CIP of, of the possibility of a five cent increase and then another five cent increase. With our current projections of what we think the growth will be, we don't anticipate those five cent increases in the CIP currently. But this was the most recent completed budget projection.
But are you saying you're going to ask for a five cent increase in our taxes? No?
No. Last, last year it was presented in the CIP with the current CIP plan. It would need that five cent increase with last year's assumptions. This year's assumptions, we'll update it. And I don't believe we would see a five cent increase in '26, which is not this, which is not this budget cycle. So.
Excuse me. Nick, what, what was the total amount we brought in? Is that, are you going to show us that or?
Uh, the total amount that was brought in was 50, or 59-ish, I believe.
Okay. And that was 23?
Yes.
And what was 22?
22 was, that was the one that I, yeah. The report itself will have that number. It's had 65. That was one where it was a miscalculation at the state level. So, uh, the fiscal year 23 was also elevated because it was the last time that they did a, I think, it was the last year that they had the reconciliation process in November or thereabouts. And so what they're doing now is, as the state collects the local option, they turn around the next month and pay it to us. So there's not a reconciliation process. So this, this 59.8, 59.8 was the last reconciliation piece that came in from 22.
So do we think this coming year is going to be in the 59 or higher?
Uh, we believe it's going to be about 55.
Of less.
Yeah. Because it's not going to have that reconciliation in it. It's going to be just the annual, the true annual receipts.
And we essentially use the extra dollars from the reconciliation and from the previous fiscal year. I mean, we're, we're doing more property tax relief than.
Yes. Yeah. In that kind of, yeah, in that category. Yeah.
Additional property tax relief to avoid the cost of the, the new city hall essentially.
Yep. For the administration building. Yes.
Nick, just another question. So are the, this is for a fiscal year or is it a calendar year? Which, which?
Fiscal year.
Okay.
Yep.
Got us much. Thanks.
As we go into the specific three category areas, we have street improvements of 6 million during fiscal year 23, the 1 million payment back to the general fund for stormwater improvements that we have done, as well as the flood prevention buyouts. That is higher than the annual allocation, but that is because it was spending some, that it was spending its designated reserve that has, was carrying over from year to year. So.
Nick, another question real quick. So 6 million for street improvements through the local option sales tax, but there's additional dollars for street improvements as part of the general fund. Is that correct?
Uh, to the debt service, to pay for the debt that's being issued for large amounts of street projects. So it's kind of on a, kind of a multiple trajectory is the debt service levies being supplemented with the 50% property tax relief piece and also just straight cash for projects with this 6 million as well.
So if a resident asks how much we're spending each year on street improvements, it would be?
Uh, that would be the larger document of the CIP. But if you want to talk about it just from local option, I can try and look to see what those percentages are. It's usually about 50% of what's been issued for debt has been towards road improvements.
Basically millions more being spent.
Yes.
I think, and Scott, you can correct me. I think since we've had local option sales tax, we're well north of 100 million in, in, in road improvements. Yeah. Since 2019.
Okay. So I think.
I think it's like 115 or something like that.
I think in one of Jonathan's reports, I think we, pre-local options, sales tax, it was about $4 million a year total for, um, street improvements and it went to 8 million.
Yeah. That was only for one particular.
Right.
Program that I think he was working on.
That's, that's only one program.
Yeah. That would have been one program and not including grant funds as well. So we're closer to 30 some million a year.
Okay.
In total.
I think we can put together kind of a table of showing roadway costs that we've spent over like the last five years. And I can send to the council.
That revenue.
We have gaming running that went there as well as, yeah.
Right. Well, and overall, we were talking about spending just shy of a half a billion dollars over a period of time, which is going to be about, what, 10, 12 years?
15.
So.
Yeah.
That'll give you a sense of what we're doing here.
That, that would be helpful to bundle it up.
Yeah. We've, I was going to say, we've definitely issued a lot more than what we've have in the past. And about 50% of what we issue debt for is for roadway.
Yeah.
Construction. So I think it'd be better if we put together a, out of the CIP, what has actually been spent on roadway.
Well, there has been, we, a wee bit of construction work in Des Moines this year. So.
So basically this, the self-tax gives us the cushion or gives the extra revenue that we can do these projects and fund them without raising taxes, right?
Yeah. It's basically cash for projects. Yeah.
And if I could just add one thing, and this might be important to us, is I know that we had the forecast, a 20-year forecast out there for street repairs and then for sidewalks. And I've always been told that because of our revenue from the one cent sales tax, we've put that money back in to sidewalk programs, being able to accelerate some of that. It'd be good if we had an idea, you know, like how, how many miles of sidewalk did we get to replace because of the one cent sales tax had we not had that? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I can have engineering put together a sidewalk specific report if you'd like.
I think it's pretty impressive.
It is.
So as we get into the neighborhood improvements, I, I would like to point out that there's three different slides on the neighborhood improvements. There's a lot of different categories here, a lot of different programs. So the next three slides are all based on the neighborhood improvements. The Invest ESM, the special investment districts is currently at that 5 million 45. We had some additional expenses beyond the contribution that we have of 5 million. We also have the improving our neighborhoods. That was currently at a spend of, of 631. That is a, a program that does maintain their allocation of grant funding from year to year. And so they do have a carrying balance going into '24 as well. The neighborhood matching grants, we did spend just a little over 250,000. Our expanding library hours for fiscal year 23 was about 405,000. And the broadband permitting cost was just under 400,000.
Is the broadband permitting cost a one-time cost or is that anticipated to be ongoing?
No, it's ongoing. At least multiple years. We now have a fifth company that is seeking permits for broadband in our communities. So I would anticipate at least another two and a half, three years of, of those permits being at a heightened level.
So will they have to go back in, into the exact same thing that, that the other company just went through? Are we going to go tear up the same, put it in the same boxes that were already installed now? Or are they going to put new boxes of their own?
Unfortunately, the way that industry works is having their own infrastructure side by side. So I would anticipate at least two more having similar technology. Verizon is doing a wireless product that will not go all the way to the house. But the others will be digging up the right of way again.
Okay.
Can we get them coordinated? That'd be nice. And this is kind of off, on, just segue into that though. But I've seen some of the damage that they're doing to our neighbors. Can, and this is kind of off, um, just segue into that though, but I've seen some of the damage that they're doing to our neighborhoods and it's not pretty. Who regulates?
And that's what this is for, is our inspectors and engineers are out there. But again, they have incredible latitude legally. Um, so there's, there is very little we can do, but what we can, we're making sure we're, we're out there.
But, but if they damage private property, my experience with engineering is we file a complaint and they typically go out and, and fix it and restore it to what the complaint was, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But they have the opportunity to, to go through the right of way.
So.
Right.
Yeah, um, why isn't, uh, the cost for them to do their profit-making business? Why isn't that at, um?
Why do we?
Yeah, why, yeah, yeah, exactly. Why do we have to pay for what they're making money on? Uh, I mean, why can't the fees for the?
So again, it's, it's regulated at the state level of what we're allowed to charge. And it, there has to be some coordination with the other utilities that are in the right of way, such that you can't charge one more than the other. Uh, Jeff, what am I missing here? And, and so it's incredibly difficult to, uh, to recoup all your costs and, and that's intentional by state law.
Yeah, just a, for a little bit of clarification, the, the council had proposed, um, an, an ordinance that was, was going to more level the playing field and equitably distribute some of the costs that the city incurs based on the right of way. And, uh, that was preempted by the legislature. Federal legislature, uh, years and years ago, thirty, almost thirty years ago now, um, gave, uh, cable companies in particular, but really any telecommunications company broad latitude to be in local government right of way subject to very limited control, local control. That's, that's, uh, been very helpfully litigated, so we're pretty comfortable, um, that we're doing the best that.
So another example of us being preempted or, uh, anything that we've done here is, is.
Another gift.
I will note.
Okay.
This is not all that helpful, but it's worth noting that there is a franchise fee that we collect on cable TV, not the, uh, phone and internet's side of it. And that, that amount is decreasing significantly each year. And so we do recoup some of these costs, uh, through that franchise fee.
Through the cable?
Only through cable.
Why don't we get it?
That's a federal law issue that doesn't allow franchise fee.
And so ju- just to clarify, that four hundred thousand, we anticipate two, three more years of that. But then we anticipate that going away once the companies that are working on installing, once they've essentially finished that.
Correct, as long as they actually follow through with their plans in the next three years, uh, we would not have a need for, uh, as much permitting.
And you, you've said as much multiple times, like it's a four hundred thousand dollar expenditure. Are we looking at when it drops off, it's going to be down to a hundred thousand, it's going to be fifty thousand? What, what are we looking, looking at when we drop off in the next couple of years?
So that's a great question that involves a lot of technology. So as long as they're not going back in and changing what they just put in, it could drop to zero theoretically. I just, I can't tell you that there won't be new entrance, a sixth and a seventh at some point. Um, there could be some combination work that may require, I just don't want to guarantee you that it would go to zero, but it could.
It's kind of placeholder.
Right, but, but that, yeah, okay, that gives me, I think, a sense at least.
As long as we're still on broad, on, um, broadband, there's nothing that we have that require that they get to every neighborhood in the city.
Correct. And again, um, there's not a lot of leverage for us to force that upon them. We'd have, we'd have to find ways to incentivize that. And so you may recall from a couple of years back, the mayor and I have talked about this with some of you as well, is that knowing that there is a strong interest in the private market to build out fiber optics in Des Moines, we wanted to see how far they would take that throughout the entire community. And as long as, let's say, two or three of them are doing that, uh, then there should not be a need for us to, to incentivize.
Uh, the second neighborhood slide, uh, we have, uh, two million going into Riker Community Recreation Center. Um, we have just over half a million going into tree care and planting. Um, the equitable service park programming just, uh, was just over four hundred thousand. Uh, park capital projects was at six hundred thousand and park enhancements is a hundred and ninety-five thousand.
So which one drops off, uh, next year, the, the two million?
Yes.
Are we, we continue to do the other capital projects and parks and?
Yeah, there.
That everything else stays?
Yes, uh, the dollar amounts might change, but all the programs will still be there except for the community recreation center as, um, other funding, uh, was allocated to.
Right, okay.
So. Uh, the last neighborhood slide is the neighborhood association grants, um, the sidewalk capital projects and the Des Moines Public Schools food pantry. Um, the school food pantry was the hundred thousand to make the two different contributions three hundred thousand. So that was originally, um, budgeted as a one-time, uh, budget item, whereas the other two, um, will be continuing into the next year. As we look at the public safety improvements and expenditures, um, the firefight positions, uh, has got over two point three. Um, that is, uh, nineteen firefighter positions. Uh, originally there was thirteen from the safer grant that, that, uh, ended in fiscal year, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Um, and then we had additional six allocated. Can't remember if this, I think this might have been the first year, uh, for that.
Why didn't we apply for the safer grant again for the additional six? Or however many we had to pay for it for three years?
Timing, I think there was a timing issue. I can go back and confirm, but I believe there was a timing issue when we wanted to implement those quickly.
So, okay. So going forward, does that put us at the authorized strength? And I know you and I've had this conversation, I, I guess, so with the nineteen being paid by this, are we at authorized strength now with the firefighters or no? Not yet.
And so we have the funding for the authorized strength, uh, the head count that we just talked about on Friday.
Was I, I, I think they were going to be just with a, if a full academy came into.
Another academy would be at the beginning of the year, calendar year.
What is the full academy, as you say, full academy?
What, what this, this last?
Range from fifteen to thirty-five.
So right now it's looking at fifteen to twenty.
Yeah, because currently the one that is wrapping up is at twenty and I would assume that that would be somewhere.
Yeah, but I thought five left out of that academy, so now we're down to fifteen.
That's not what I recall, but.
Okay.
But I, I, I believe they're only within, I think it was three that we talked about on Friday.
Yeah.
Uh, that they're, um, with, with those coming out of the academy, I believe they're off by three. And so when we.
So the new academy would be twenty or fifteen?
So that'll be determined in about six weeks.
Hmm.
Um, but it'll be, I would estimate at this point in time, it's going to be between fifteen and twenty.
Okay, and then are you counting on some dropping off because typically they don't always all make it?
Yes, the, the ideal planning that finance and the fire department do, similar to what police, is to have full authorization at the end of the academies. And so at the beginning, when they're doing the recruitment, they look at what they have, uh, for retirements that are planned, because there is the drop program, many of you are familiar with, where they can set a, a retirement date out on the calendar a couple of years and quite a few do that. And then we look at annually how many we lose, uh, due to, to other, uh, natural causes and, and, uh, choosing other careers. And, uh, then we estimate that on top of that. And then we also look at, especially as we have large academies, that we will lose a couple, three, um, sometimes even more during the academy itself. And so we're making sure we're heavy, uh, higher than the authorized strength at the beginning of each of these academies, such that by the time they finish up, if planned properly, they'd be at full strength, understanding that, um, before they start the next academy, they might be down a few before, at that point as well.
But those are still, I mean, you still have a training portion, once they get out of the academy, they're, they're, I mean, they're.
Oh, sure.
They're still not.
Sure.
Able to do all of the.
Both police and fire have, uh, their probationary periods, uh, that they need to go through and in which both cases, they're checking off their skill sets, uh, while they still have some supervision with them.
So with the new hiring, both of the apparatuses that are continuously out of service, as we go through the hiring process, will they be back in service other than for training? Fifty percent of the time, eighty percent of the time, a hundred percent of the time, what, what, what is it?
Yeah, I can, I, I can check on that, the exact.
Cause I know you, back in January, you were giving us a kind of a weekly report of how many of these were pulled out of service, the eight and I don't know the other numbers up in Ward One. Um, but we, we don't get that anymore, so I'm just kind of wondering where we're at with that being pulled out of service. Cause I think most of the residents, at least the ones that I speak to, if there's three apparatuses in a firehouse, they're, uh, they're thinking three apparatuses are staffed. So if they're not, um, I guess we need to figure out what we're going to do.
The question would be if it's fully staffed, are they still, can they still operate all those?
Right.
Apparatus.
At the authorized.
If the authorized strength is there.
Sure.
Have enough to operate all the equipment that we currently have.
Sure, and, and what, we have a, a conversation coming up with, with fire at a work session, uh, that we can vet through that as well. Understanding that, uh, we intentionally have additional equipment throughout the system. But I, I completely understand that when it's out in, uh, the stations, there's an expectation, so, uh, we, we have an awful lot of specialized equipment as well.
Right.
That, that they, we draw from staff.
I would just ask that when we, when it comes time, it sounds like we're going to have a workshop.
Yes.
I know the last couple of classes, um, I know council has advocated, said, hey, hire more, hire more. Came to us, you were going to hire thirteen and, you know, we, it got that bumped up, but it took some work to do that. Why aren't we just planning ahead and saying, let's make sure that we have enough firefighters, even realizing that five of them may drop out?
Right, so again, it comes down to the service being provided. Are we having good response times? Are we using the right apparatus? Do we have the transportation system, uh, in place with the, uh, uh, the ability for them to, to change the lights? All, all these factors come into play that the service being provided is exceptional. And, and it even gets into how, the higher level of EMT training, uh, paramedic training that's required.
I just want to make sure that we have enough firefighters, that we don't, that we don't put our firefighters, what we put them through a few years ago when there were, you know, mandatory callbacks and, I mean, they were running on short, short.
Yeah, we won't, yeah, short of another pandemic, we will not go there again.
The other items under the public safety is the mobile health, mental health crisis service grant that we work with Broadlawn's on. Um, we also have some positions with the public safety dispatchers and equity liaison position. And then some police and fire equipment, some of that is, um, uh, carcinogen, uh, for the firefighters as well as some, uh, body worn cameras for the police as well.
Is that an ongoing expense?
Uh, there's different, uh, the body worn is kind of an ongoing, uh, the rest of them is kind of based off of, um, specialized equipment that may need that, that depending on the dollar amounts that we have, um, through the budget process that Scott would allocate.
So are you allocating seven hundred every time?
No, uh, it will vary from year to year. Um, if you look at some of the prior years, uh, the equipment, uh, was only three hundred and fifty and twenty-two.
So what about the mobile mental health crisis? Uh, I mean, if we're not, I mean, can we, can we put more funding towards that?
Uh, that is based off the agreement with, um, Broadlon and the service they provide. So if we were to increase that, that service that they're providing, it would, would increase the cost here.
So yes, we could.
Yes.
And we can take dollars if we're not using it for equipment and put it towards that if we.
Yes, and, and the intent would to be try and use as much of the sales tax for these purposes and, and avoid the general fund.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
So yes, it's flexible between these, these efforts and you've also got the, uh, the Broadlawn's agreement for the nine-one-one dispatch counselor that's, that's answering calls as well.
So we could review that agreement to see about, can they find more people, hire more people and explain that? That would probably be the bigger obstacle.
Okay, actually is right now is, is being able to staff up.
Okay.
The last slide I have is based off of the reserves.
Doesn't want you to be done, Nick.
I know. Uh, the designated reserve, again, is that, that carry forward balance, uh, currently for the end of fiscal year twenty-three. It is only the, um, eye on the improving our neighborhoods, um, dollars that are in there. Uh, and then the financial reserve is at that nineteen four, which is, uh, kind of where currently we're trying to plan to be around that fifteen to twenty. Um, I think as we, uh, see a leveling out of the, the revenue going forward, we might, we might put it more as a percentage based of what revenue comes in. Uh, but right now nineteen, uh, is kind of within that target that we have.
What's the typical reserve percentage? Are we shooting for like twenty-two percent?
Uh, the, uh.
Twenty-two percent would be?
So, so it's thirty would be what AAA would be for reserves.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that.
That's about what this is, um.
Yeah, that'd be seventeen, eighteen million based on, I mean, if we're expecting.
Yeah, this is about thirty-two right now, um, but we do anticipate with the twenty-four budget, I think, a slight overuse of what we're projecting for revenue. So it's going to end us at about that thirty percent.
Okay, so we're, so the numbers we're seeing, we're drawing down on some of the reserve.
Just a little bit, yeah. Any other questions on the local option?
Anybody, all right?
I, I think, yeah, and, and as we do, um, I, I think hopefully it goes without question how much of a game changer the local option sales tax has been to the financial success of Des Moines. I cannot reiterate that enough that, um, it has not only helped us build up our, our reserves, allow us to lower the tax rate and keep it lower. Um, but it's also allowed us to, to do more within our streets, sidewalks, everything we've seen here, neighborhood revitalization. And then it is a, uh, different source of income that has its own fluctuations that protect us for what happens, uh, with property taxes. So I, I just cannot, uh, under, uh, speak to the, the benefits, uh, that the sales taxes brought us the last four years.
And thanks to both of you. I know you put a lot of time in this and I know Nick does too, so thank you. And it's good to be transparent, you know? We, we said we would always do this as we went forward, uh, getting this passed and, and so everyone knows where the sales tax dollars is going. So, uh, good job and let's, let's keep doing this.
So I know the last topic we have is, uh, the scheduling of our budget decisions for council and the public interactions that we'll have and go out and explain the budget. Um, there are some changes this year based on legislation from last year. And so I'll let Nick explain the additional hearing that we need to have, uh, as part of that process.
More technical issue.
There's also going to be, not stealing all of.
From last year, there's a, there's a, there's a law change.
Yeah. Yep, and pretty significant, pretty significant, uh, change on the county because. Because they will be sending out, uh, quite a bit of information to every property owner, every address within their county. And what the state has attempted to do is provide each property owner with a comparison of, of what was paid by jurisdiction the previous year to what's being proposed in the current year. Um, I'm not sure that they're gonna get there with what they've asked for in this report. Um, but that's definitely the direction that we understand they're headed. Um, now that then is a backwards planning exercise where if they wanna have a nice report for all the residents in March, that the other, all the jurisdictions need to have their information prior to that and submit to the county. So, uh, it's an exercise in understanding that if there's any delays at all in the local jurisdictions, that causes issues for the county to report out because there are no, nothing less than, I think, fifteen different taxing authorities across Pope County, uh, that have to be able to submit their information, uh, to the county. So I really feel for them just as much in this exercise. They, they stall long enough there, Nick.
Is the state, uh, maybe considering, um, reimbursing maybe a jurisdiction in which they have a lot of space and property for all the streets and roads and infrastructure that is owned by that jurisdiction?
I'm pretty sure there's no plans to, to compensate their host community.
So if they have a thousand or more acres in a particular jurisdiction?
I don't see that coming.
Okay, just, just wondering.
All right, Nick.
Okay. Um, so, uh, we've got multiple months on this slide. And as we get to more of the tail end of the calendar, you'll see some of the changes, uh, on the setting hearing, hold hearing and, and the new meeting that we have to take, that has to take place. Um, but other than today, talking about the calendar, the next, uh, possible budget related items are kind of our presentations or Q and A's. Um, so the approach that, uh, Scott and I had discussed was to, uh, have multiple days as options and then we'll kind of pin them down, what, what makes sense for, uh, different areas. So, uh, when we go through these slides, you'll see that the green is actually holiday, the public schools breaks. So you can kind of see that in correlation to what we have here. Um, as we look for December, some of the possible dates is, uh, Tuesday on the fifth, a Wednesday on the thirteenth, uh, Thursday on the fourteenth, and two different possible Saturdays on the ninth and the sixteenth. Um, also, uh, given, uh, some more, uh, flexibility on possible dates, we did include a couple of Januaries as well. So I'll flip over to January.
Can I just ask one thing about the December dates?
Sure.
Would those be in the morning or afternoon? I know in December's, in December, we get a lot of, of churches, daycares, school, you know, have programs on Saturdays and Sundays. Would we have those like in the morning maybe or?
Um, normally what we've done on Saturdays has been morning. Um, and then what we've normally done during the week has been evenings. But, um, we, yeah, we can work with what days we, and times we want.
Yeah, just, I know that, I know that there's a lot of Saturdays people have programs.
So we, we, we try, in the past, I think last year, we did four different, um, four different presentations. And so this allows us to have multiple options to go to and we'll finalize those over the, you know, the next month or two.
Just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah.
But more specifically, as, as work Council members, if there's a specific date and time that works best, let us know.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we're trying to do is, is, uh, reach out to the entire community.
And get a variety of times, some in the morning, some afternoon.
Right. And if you've got ideas on venues, we've, we've had pretty good luck with libraries and community centers.
I've never seen that. Uh, the other two dates that we have for possible, uh, budget presentation dates is Thursday, the fourth and, uh, Saturday, the sixth. As we get further into the actual budget, uh, information that gets released and the budget presentation type stuff, we've had them will be the, uh, preliminary budget documents. So the, uh, operated in budget book as well as the CIP book, we're currently targeting February fifth to have those released. Um, and then, uh, budget presentations to happen sometime during the week of the nineteenth to the twenty-third. So whether that's one day or multiple days, we'll kind of iron that out, but we're targeting that week for, uh, presentations.
Again, give us your input, cause we kind of both wait, full day. There was a desire last year, add up a couple of half days as we were generally doing other topics. Go back that day, but kind of wondered if that was the case, that was gonna work well.
But we wanted to kind of leave this up to discussion and, and thought process to the council, um, so that we can kind of figure out what makes the most sense.
I'd prefer to do one full day and be done with it.
Into and the full days get short shift by the end.
Only if our patience
Your patience never runs thin, Joe.
I think we need to look at the options and see what's involved and see what's the budget and see what schedule's best, but
We've got a few weeks.
And how much discussion we really, you know, we intend to have.
This is where we start getting into kind of the fun, I'll, I'll use quotes for fun. Uh, unique items, uh, that we are going to see. Um, so the new total debt tax levy, uh, that needs to be submitted to Pope County is due by March fifteenth. Um, that's supposed to be all taxing entities are supposed to get that information to them with a due date of March fifteenth.
We're gonna do that on the fourth. We do that on March fourth?
We
They are hearing or?
No, there's, there's not a hearing involved. It's just kind of what we anticipate for our, our levy.
So one of the biggest changes is they are now giving us through the end of finish our budget.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I was just gonna ask. Are they extending this budget? Cause there's no way. How does Pope County mail all this information?
Well, that's still a concern too, because
How can they do it in three days?
Yes.
That's the other concern as well.
We will not be submitting
We will not be submitting it by the fifteenth. We'll, we'll, we'll be trying to do it as soon as
You can.
As soon as we can early because there is a strong concern because within the five days or three business days, um, Pope County is required to mail out the information to every single property owner.
So they have to compile the information from all the taxing entities, get something put together, printed and put in the mail?
Yes, by the twentieth.
There's no way possible. If everybody waited till the end.
Correct.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding this right.
Based off of what was passed, this is the timeline that they allowed, uh, for the different taxing entities to put their levy rates together. And then what the counties have to deal with. Yes.
It's all in the new
Yes. The, yep, House File, uh, seven, seven eighteen.
I assume Pope County is reaching out to everyone to get it before the fifteen.
But I would say the Department of Management is doing that as well at the state level because they're hearing a lot of complaints and concerns from all of the, uh, county.
The counties will take guidance from Department of Management.
Yes. What, the form of those?
I was just gonna say, what is the formation? Is it gonna be standardized?
They're gonna try to, but that's a state's, uh, responsibility.
And they have not done that yet.
They're currently working on that.
Okay. Just wanna
They've been working since I think it passed. It's just trying to
Catch up with all of it.
Yes, because they have to do a bunch of other behind the scenes stuff on the calculations on how the limitation works for all the communities on the, their state system and how that works with the limitation of, of the different rates. So with that, they have to create the system in which all of the different areas can put in the amount of valuation to determine how much their rate gets changed.
Much more complicated.
Uh, it, it will be, yes. Um, especially, um, the, uh, the communities that are under three percent, it's less so, um, because there's no adjustment needed. But usually what, uh, the Department of Management does for all the municipalities is it puts, they have a system. It's an online system for us to enter in our budget information and there's restrictions that it has in there. So like in the past, there was, uh, you would type in the amount that you're requesting for property taxes. If that was over the eight-ten in that general levy line, it would automatically stop you and put in what the limited number you could actually put in there. So they have to work on their, their database or their system to adhere to the new rules of if you're over three percent growth, you get trimmed two percent. And that calculation brings down that levy. If you, as soon as you get past three percent, it trims off two percent from your growth by artificially pushing your general levy down. If you go above six percent, it does a trim of three, three percent. So if you, let's say, grow at three and a half percent, which is about what our growth, uh, average growth of the last ten years was, uh, you, it would trim two percent off and you'd only, uh, basically be able to increase your property tax revenue by one point five.
So the, one of the takeaways here is that it's more complex to administrate the new rules, but what they've gotten to or trying to get to is a simplified report to property owners and property taxpayers. Um, but the only way they can do that is putting these additional requirements on us. The, the changes that they made to valuation growth, um, essentially make it incredibly difficult to project revenues beyond one year.
Mm-hmm.
And so that, and we recall that under the old system, and it still exists to a degree now, you have your ups and downs based on whether or not there's a revaluation year and how the rollback impacts that. The, uh, you, you'll still have some of that up and down, but what you will have now is a less, less opportunity to act, actually capture the up years. So when the, we have the bad years like this year that we're in right now, you recall, we actually had negative valuation growth. We actually had less valuation, taxable valuation to work with than we did the previous year. That's one of the down years. We were anticipating an up year in this cycle that we're starting right now. The upside opportunity for us is really capped at three percent now. Because if we go above three percent, it takes you back down automatically. So, uh, what that all means is there will have to be changes in state law moving forward or you will see communities, um, unable to, to pay their bills because they will have this zero to one percent growth on the bad years and two to three percent growth on the good years. And that's not gonna get it done with inflationary costs, uh, that we have. So
Or they'll have to raise their tax.
Or go into, yes, or go into, uh, alternative revenue operations.
Alter, because
The best solution of all.
If, if it is based off of the eight-ten, you are limited on that growth. If you can't raise it beyond that percentage growth. So you'd have to either go to different expenses, um, like the tort liability levy or employee benefits levy. You'd have to, those are the only ones that are really available beyond the debt service. But for operations, those are kind of the only three categories you really have at your disposal. So you have to kind of, uh, if you don't have those specific expenses, you have to find a different revenue source. Yeah.
So more to come.
Okay.
So with that, with that timing kind of being shifted, um, I wanna hit one other thing, I guess, in March. Um, as with, with regards to that notice that goes out, as I believe, uh, the, the conversations that we've had with the state, um, I believe all of the, uh, taxing entities are supposed to include the information to the new meeting as well with the, with their total levy rate will be so that the, um, property owners will be able to attend those meetings if they so choose of all the different taxing entities that is affecting their rate. So it's supposed to be an information of all the rates that are being proposed and when they might, uh, where, where those different entities are going to present. So in theory, they'll be able to see if, uh, the cities, what, when, if what we are planning to do with our rate and what the school is, what the, uh, Broadlawn's, all the different taxing entities, what they're planning on having for their rate, they should be able to see when they can have that discussion, which will be in our April timeframe.
And that is to be posted in the letter that goes out from the county?
From the county.
Whatever we submit, that's what we have to do.
Yes.
Okay.
So currently, um, what we're intending on doing is having that new meeting on April first. Um, and that will be, uh, as a, a special meeting, um, prior to the evening council meeting so that we can, um, have that, uh, council meeting. There's no resolution that has to be passed at that meeting, but it has to be a special meeting for that budget.
And it's hearings, public hearing.
Yeah. Um, and then the set hearing would be at the actual council meeting and that's why you have to have them separated out as well. Uh, the gray area that you saw in the tail end of March and at the beginning of April is the publication date for the hearing that we would have then on April fifteenth. And then the approving of the different items, the, the bu, the operation budget, the capital, capital, uh, improvement plan, um, as well as transfers and different things that relate to, uh, the budget. And then it is due to the Pope County and the state by April thirtieth. Full month later than what has been in the past. And, uh, this calendar, I decided if you're not visual for the calendar, I also have a summary page that has all the pertinent dates.
Nick, by that April first meeting, is that getting pretty late in the game to make changes?
Uh, we'll have discussions. Um, what, the only thing that you're unable to do, uh, from a standpoint of once the, uh, levy rate is, uh, put, it distributed to the county to be out to the property taxes, you cannot go above that.
You, you can go below.
You can go below. Um, uh, same thing with the notice for, uh, the budget notice that we'll have. Um, you'll, you're able to decrease the expenses, but you cannot increase the expenses.
Can we fuss things around?
You could, because that is based off of, uh, as long as it's within the same function. So you could, in theory, um, shift expenses that were, like, let's say, public safety, from a public safety expense to a different public safety expense. That's all I had.
You know, Scott, one of the things in, to the rest of the council, it, don't we find it interesting as we go around the neighborhoods and, and individual, um, uh, citizens and, and businesses? And we look at, at the budget situation and how, uh, they're handling it up under the gold dome. They seem to think the, uh, the key to success is, is cutting taxes and cutting revenue to the people that provide the services that are, seem to be more in demand as time goes on and give us less ability to deliver. And it's almost seems like there's an education process that has to happen that they ought to spend a little time serving at the local government level so they understand the demands and the wants and the needs of our citizens, uh, on a day-to-day basis. And their expectation, whether it's new fire equipment or more people to man the stations or, um, streets or whatever. And of course, we're a city that, uh, is older and we have to redo a lot of our infrastructure. There's a lot of areas around this state that are newer, sometimes in, in, uh, in the suburbs and whatever. And so they've got streets that don't need to be immediately replaced. I mean, we've got a half a billion dollar budget going into that replacement over a fifteen-year period. And, um, they're limiting the amount of revenue that we can have to support support all the wants and needs and demands of our citizens and businesses to thrive and succeed and make Des Moines and the state of Iowa a place that people want to live, want to work, want to have a business and uh, have their families. And I, I just wish there was some way that uh, we could have a reasonable discussion with, you know, everybody up there. We function in a very nonpartisan way right here at City Hall. And um, you know, as we've always said, there's no such thing as a Republican or a Democratic pothole. Potholes have to be fixed and we have to have the money to be able to do it. And it's a little scary to, to look at what's happening and plus looking at inflation and everything else that happens that impacts us as well. So I think that um, it's, as time goes on and we move forward, um, not only do we have to understand what we can do and have very able-bodied people here that uh, can help us work through some of these situations, but um, we have to find the adequate dollars to be able to provide this, everything that our, our citizenry wants, needs and demands in the 21st century. So thank you for all the work that you do, but boy, we got some work to do to let those people sometimes up under the gold dome understand the demands and the wants and the needs of the citizens in this century are somewhat different than they were in the last. Having said all that, unless anybody has anything else? No closed session? I guess we're going to start? Okay, all right. We'll be here for that. Everybody, 4:45 Municipal Housing Governing Board. Until then, this meeting's adjourned.